This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice this meeting was provided to the home news Tribune, The Starleger, and the Highland Park Planet on April 18th, 2024, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue in Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. All right, it's at our to my right and left of council chambers. Mike, can you lead us in the pleasure relations?
I declare this is the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Foster?
Yes.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Here.
Councilman George? Councilman Hale?
Here.
Council President Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han? Councilwoman Distonant?
Here.
Borough Attorney Shaw?
Here.
Borough Administrator Hoover?
Here.
Tonight, I have a proclamation which I'm going to present, and it's Poverty Awareness Week from May 20th, May 20th, May 20th to May 26th of 2024 is known as Poverty Awareness Week. And it reads, whereas period supplies are necessary products for each month for millions of people across the country, and whereas national survey and research studies have reported that two in five people who menstruate struggle to secure enough period supplies to meet their needs each month due to the lack, due to the lack of income. And whereas the lack of period supply, known as period poverty, can adversely affect the health and well-being of menstruators. And whereas period poverty exacerbates the vicious cycle of poverty by forcing menstruators to withdraw from daily life, losing pay, or missing educational opportunities. And whereas menstruators struggle with period poverty risks of infections by using proxy products such as socks, toilet paper, or not even changing products as often as they need. And whereas the residents of Highland Park, New Jersey, recognize the, recognize period poverty is a public health issue. Addressing period poverty can lead to economic opportunity for the state residents and communities and improve health for people who menstruate, thus ensuring that all people have access to basic necessities required, required to strive and to refresh their, their full potential. And whereas New Jersey is proud to be the home of trusted base community organizations, including Highland Park Food Pantry, and recognizes the impact and the importance of, of period product in ensuring that health and providing economic stability and distribute period products throughout its channels. Now, therefore, I, Elsie Foster, Mayor of Borough of Highland Park, do proclaim the week of May 20th to May 28th, 2024, as Period Poverty Awareness Week in the Borough of Highland Park, New Jersey. Thanks to period, thanks for period, thank you, Period Supply Bank and staff, volunteers, donators, for your dedicated service to ensure to the citizens of Highland Park, New Jersey, to donate generously to the period supply bank product, product drive, and organize it and collect all the products, the period products, to those who struggle with period poverty, so that all in Highland Park residents can thrive and reach their full potential. Witness, therefore, by my hand on May 20th, 2024. And I do have a proclamation. Now, I'm going to move on to approval of minutes. May, I have a motion to approve the following minutes as distributed, May 7th, 2024.
Okay.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Distonant?
Yes.
Okay, it's the council report, and I'm going to take the first leap on this council report tonight. And I want to start off by acknowledging two events that we celebrate nationally in our country this month. One is Asian Pacific Islander Month, and Councilmember Stephanie Kim Cho Han, along with the Human Relations Commission, took an opportunity. They made a great video. So please, when you get a moment, go on the website, take a look at the video as they inform, and they tell about the contributions that API members of our community have made to not just Highland Park, but to entire, our entire state, our entire nation, and to the entire world. With that said, this month is also Jewish American Heritage Month. On the behalf of the Borough, I'm pleased to acknowledge that May is Jewish American Heritage Month. As President Biden shared in his proclamation on April 30th, for this occasion, for centuries, the preservation hope and unshaken faith of the Jewish people have inspired people around the world. During Jewish, Jewish American Heritage Month, we celebrate the immeasurable impact that Jewish, of the Jewish values, contribution, and culture to our nation, to our nation's character. And we recommit to realizing the promise of America for all Jewish Americans. In 1654, a small band of 23 Jewish refugee fled persecution aboard a sail into the port of modern day New York City. They fought for religious freedom, helped define them as the bedrock principles upon which our nation was built. Jewish American culture have been tightly woven into the fabric of our country. The Jewish American Heritage Month, we honor Jewish Americans who have given, given us upon the promises of our nation. We celebrate the contribution, the culture, and the values they have passed down from generation to generation, and have shaped who we are as Americans. We remember that the power lies within each of us to raise, to rise together against hate, to see each other as fellow human beings, and to ensure that, that the Jewish community is afforded the safety, the security, and the dignity they deserve as they contribute, as they continue to shine their light on America and around the world. And that was from President Biden. While I'm on my topic, I'm going to continue. I have some good news to share, redevelopment news. I know this has been long awaited. I, since last year, have been promised that we're going to do a charrette, and we're going to show what's going to be happening on Track C. That time has come, and Track C is from Second Avenue almost all the way up to South Third, so it's South Second all the way up to South Third. And on Wednesday, June 5th, at 7:00 PM, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, we will be having a charrette at the Highland Park High School. And please, come on out. You've been waiting a very, very long time for this. So come out to hear what we have to say, to see some of the renderings that we have, and we need your comments and support as we discuss the future of our downtown, which, as I, as was one of my main campaign promises, to see our downtown become a thriving environment. With that said, we're not just focusing on our downtown. Upper Raritan, we're going to be meeting in Trenton in the next, next week to talk about the road diet on Upper Raritan Avenue. So I'm looking forward to that discussion. We have been in long detailed discussion with DOT. We're going to meet with them at their offices and along with our Senate, Senator Dykman, and some of our state representatives to discuss what is it that we're going to actually make happen on Upper Raritan. I can't wait because I have a lot to say. Also, in redevelopment, last meeting, we talked about Ubray moving up to where the P and K building is. Well, that has actually happened. I'm excited to share with you that Ubray's will be relocated to the P and K properties. This development will bring about numerous upgrades to the old P and K building, transforming it into a beautiful, into a beautiful space on Woodbridge Avenue. And Woodbridge Avenue, I felt, has been neglected for a long time. So it's great, that's something nice and substantive. It's going to be coming to Woodbridge Avenue. Stay tuned, I'm excited about this project as well. And I'm looking forward to share more as we move along. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the mayor's conference in Atlantic City. And the mayor's conference is where other mayors, we all come together, we have conferences, and we share ideas, thoughts, and what's going well in your town. How can we learn from each other? A great networking session. And as I network and shared and learned from other mayors, I have some ideas that I will be implementing soon because I think they will be great for our community, to help our community grow and thrive. Keep posted, I will be sharing more of that with you. And and that's, and that's my report for now. And at this point, I'm going to ask for council report, and I'm going to start with Councilmember Kim Cho Han.
Thank you, Mayor. No report tonight, but I did want to announce that the rescheduled meeting from last month, Rain Control will be meeting this Thursday at the 23rd at 5:30 PM. The details for the Zoom link will be on the website as well, hborrow.com.
Thank you. Councilmember Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you all know, my name is Matt, and I am a big fan of hats. Before I begin my economic development report, I must make a small and gentle retort. The recent Highland Park Rec Theater production of Musical, the Musical Susical, was a fantastic production. All involved deserved more than an honorable mention. Were I a Tony Award voter, I would certainly put them in contention. My own son had a great role, this third tree from the left, a role requiring a certain gravity and depth. But all of the actors, from the cat to the Courtney Elephant, to all the small embers of Whoville, along with their mayor, to the birds and the monkey and a grumpy kangaroo or two, this production made me say again and again, yahoo! Thank you to all those who made it such a success, but special thanks to theater leader, one Miss Tova Halpern, who, for which we as a town are truly blessed. Thank you, oh, thank you for a wonderful day and an amazing play. No one to more, now onto more mundane matters of economic development. Concerns important, yes, but to do them in rhyme, oh, what a mess. I wanted to, the mayor jumped and, and, and took most of my report. That's okay, fantastic news about the June 5th Track C redevelopment. Very, very excited to get this community conversation going. As the mayor said, it's June 5th at 7 o'clock. And I just also wanted to say a big thank you to Terry and the entire professional team for their hard work, and of course, the mayor for her leadership to ensure that this is happening. So thank you very much, we're looking forward to it, it's going to be a great event. Next up, the NPP, also the Neighborhood Preservation Program. We are looking at doing a couple of classic car shows on Woodbridge Avenue this summer. These are great events, lots of towns hold them, but sort of given the car-centric nature of Woodbridge Avenue, we think it's a good fit for up at the NPP district. Lots of fun old classic cars coming up. We have some tentative dates, July 11th and August 22nd, but a lot more details and a lot more planning are on the way, but those are coming. More pressing is that Main Street Highland Park's annual downtown planting days are back again. It's this Thursday, May 23rd, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM, and Friday the 24th, from 11:00 to 5:00 PM. So Main Street is responsible for putting in the planting on Raritan and Woodbridge Avenues. We have volunteers who come in, and they fill 150 downtown planters with beautiful plants and supplies and flowers that are bought by Main Street. So if you are interested in helping to plant, just come by the Main Street Park offices at 212 Raritan Avenue. Look for everybody outside, all of the plants will be outside. Again, rain or shine, that's the way they work. But come and pick up your plants, I'll give you a planter assignment, and you can come down and, and make a great addition to our downtown. Couple things, also, last week, there was a great celebration for Israeli Independence Day, Yom Ha'atzmud. According to news reports, we had about 300 people peacefully show up to celebrate the birth of Israel. And I want to thank Central Jersey Stands with Israel and Peace of Mind is the co-sponsors, and also to my colleagues, Councilman Hirsch and Kim Cho Han, who were able to attend, thank you very much for that. As the mayor said, this is Asian American Pacific Islander Month and Jewish American Heritage Month. So thank you very much for your reports on those, those are fantastic. Additions as well to our community, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm Tara Canavera, Health and Human Services Committee Chair. The Board of Health and I would like to thank Jesse J. Crossen for his years of dedication as the chair for the Board of Health. He was amazing during the pandemic, keeping us up to date on all the latest developments. Thankfully, even though he stepped down his chair, he is going to stay on as a valued member. And we also thank Sarah Kelly, the new chair, for stepping up, and we're sure she's going to do just as good a job as Jay did. The Commission for Universal Access would like to remind everyone that while everyone wants the Fulton Avenue top park finished, it is important and legally required that it is accessible to all our children in the community. Highland Park has always been dedicated to this, and we are going to continue to make sure that all of our parks are accessible to all of our children. Also, Pat McKenna from the Commission is holding a training for American Sign Lightning, Sign Language translators for textile ASL. He's working with our community center on the date, and further information will be given as we get the dates. The mayor already mentioned the video for Human Relations. So my next thing for Human Relations is on June 3rd, they will post the Pride Flag Raising at 6:00 PM, and the Caribbean Flag Raising on June 10th, and also both are at 6:00 PM, and the Juneteenth Flag Raising on June 19th at 6:00 PM. The Highland Park Food Pantry hours are the second and fourth Thursday of every month, 9:00 AM to 10:45 AM, and again, from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and the Saturday following, the second and fourth Thursday, from 9:30 to 10:30 AM at the community center. The Highland Park Gisaboot Pantry at Zone 16 Center is Tuesdays and Wednesdays from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Both programs take donations of period products and diapers, and both programs are serving almost 400 families in our community. The Mental Health Commission wants to remind everyone that if you're in crisis, please call 988 for help or text HOME, H-O-M, to 741741. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Goldston?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, I have a brief report for tonight. I'm Jesse DeSalle, I'm the Recreation Arts Committee Chair. Just a few updates. First off, just like I usually do right now, I would like to provide a quick reminder that grocery store transportation is available through the community center. Earlier today, at the community center, it was the annual health fair, where over 40 people stopped in to get a variety of health screenings for charge. This coming Memorial Day, on Monday, we'll be having our annual Memorial Day parade, which will start at 11:00 AM in New Brunswick. We cross the bridge around 11:30 AM, proceeding after the Dogway Monument in town, where a ceremony will be taking place at conclusion. Earlier next month, on Wednesday, June 5th, there'll be a senior lunch cornucopia princess cruise trip. That sounds exciting. And lastly, my report for tonight is also in June, will be a senior prom. It'll be a Dancing with the Stars event on Tuesday, June 18th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, featuring dinner by Zia Lisa, with a kosher option available on request, and dancing, entertainment, and voting for 2024 Senior Prom King, Hen, Queen. And Mayor, that is all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. My name is Matthew Hirsch, I'm from the Public Works Committee. And being up here on this fine day makes it even better. I just wanted to just really express my enthusiasm about I thank you to the Economic Development Committee Mayor and Terry for completing a relationship with Ubray's and transferring over to P and K, that was an enormous amount of work. And also, just thank you for that, it's very exciting. You've heard this before, but I have to just keep banging this drum. Bulk pickup is underway, so if you have bulk garbage, you can have large, large volumes of bulk waste. Bulk waste collection is by appointment right now. Pickups are scheduled during Wednesdays, during the months of June, September, and October. To make an appointment, please call Public Works at 732-247-9379. Each household may request up to two collections per year. And just a reminder, this week, after the townwide garage sale, Tuesday, September 17th, Thursday, September 19th, there will be a townwide bulk collection. We do not need to transplant it, but you know, making appointment is always better. And you can find out more on the Borough's website, www.hborrow.com for acceptable materials, when you can and cannot, the do's and don'ts of the waste undercurb. Roads, again, potholes in crosswalk striping has been underway in earnest. If you see a pothole, our crews are out, we're filling them. Sometimes it can't be filled overnight, but they do get filled, and they go on a list, and that is what our Public Works crews are doing, particularly on Wednesdays, when there is no trash or recycling pickup. And of course, it's also weather dependent. So there are a lot of factors that come into play. I don't understand either. I don't understand why these potholes take so long to get filled. No, no, we do, and I just wanted to put that out there, that, that, that there are, that they are being prioritized, and that they are known. Please report them on the Borough website, www.hborrow.com under reporter concern. And just a few updates on 2024 road projects, which we've asked in the past. We're looking at the summer and fall for North Fourth Avenue from Denison Street to Raritan, Denison Street from North Second Avenue to North Fifth, Harper Street, which actually we've been getting a lot of questions about, between South First Ave all the way to South Fourth. So that'll be a considerable stretch of roadway that has really needed to be repaired. It's, it's the old concrete surfacing, so that's a considerable project. And then, of course, Woodbridge Avenue, Volker Street to Fox Road, and that will be in partnership with Middlesex County. I did just want to point to a thorn, and I think in a lot of our sides, the, the intersection of Woodbridge Avenue and South 11th is smooth now. And that was a real problem area.
That is happy, I'm very happy.
Please, thank, you know, thank, thank you for your patience. Yeah, everybody's tire rims are happy. Thank you for your patience. Obviously, this was, you know, this, this was prior to this. So we really appreciate our crews getting out there and taking care of that one. And particularly, you know, and just so you know, you know, there's, there are long-term plans for Woodbridge Avenue as far as we're repaving, new tree plantings and everything. You know, ideally, these, these types of municipal and county projects would always go hand in hand, but sometimes we really have to get out there, make them repair, and then just plan for the future. So that was that. Sustainable Highland Park, there is a regular Sustainable Highland Park meeting tomorrow on Zoom at 7:30. Tune in to learn more about our efforts to be good stewards of the environment as well as to get involved in our adopt a drain, adopt a storm drain and community cleanup programs. There are community cleanup scheduled for Saturday, June 1st. That's the area around Krausers, the First Aid Squad and surrounding streets meet at 10:00 AM at the Irving School on South 11th Avenue. Just right at the front there on South 11th. And then, on Sunday, June 16th, Sustainable Highland Park, in cooperation with the Highland Park Ecology and Environmental Group, will be conducting a cleanup on the trail along where the river parallel to South Adelaide Avenue, again, 10:00 AM to noon, meet at the entrance of Valley Place, the Valley Place Trail, that's at the intersection of South Adelaide Avenue and Valley Place. If you want to know more, email sustainablehighlandpark@highlandparksustainable@gmail.com and/or check out sustainablehighlandpark.org for more resources and informative webinars on issues like backyard composting, as well as the Rutgers Environmental Stewart Program, which trains volunteers on how they can take action to help solve environmental problems. The, there is, just because we don't have, we don't have a regular meeting, so I just want to announce that there is a Shaved Tree Advisory Committee meeting on Zoom on June 12th at 7:30. Please come out and find the link to the, you can find the link to the calendar section at the Borough website, learn more about our ambitious tree planting schedule as illustrated by the Borough's 72 new trees recently added to our canopy. Two more items, if you live on a corner property, congratulations, you have a beautiful vista and probably a lot of great views of your neighborhood. You also have a lot of sidewalk that you have to maintain, so we definitely understand that. But you also might have some landscaping, particularly shrubs that, you know, with, if, if they're not being maintained or blocking sightlines, intersections, not only for cars, but, but also pedestrians and cyclists. Sometimes it's really hard to see around this corner. So tis the season when, you know, everything is vibrant and blooming, and things are growing really fast. So please, please stay on top of your landscaping, particularly if you have a corner property around an intersection. That's going to be critically important, and everybody will be better for it. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Sue Winkler and Gary Kaplan for putting together just a magnificent and well-organized program for Porch Fest this, this past Sunday. I felt like I was on Beale Street in Memphis. Music was oozing from the buildings and the porches, and it was so cool. And it was just great to see so much talent in this town. You know, how many really quality homegrown guys there are. And we're not just saying that because they're from here, these are really, really good. So thank you.
Borough Administrator report?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple items this evening. First, I just wanted to point out on your agenda tonight is the Stormwater Ordinance introduction. I just wanted to give a little overview, none of the details, but essentially, we overhauled our ordinance to comply with DEP standards in, I believe it was 2021. When these amendments reflect our new rules, they propagated in July of last year, and we're on your deadline to get our ordinance in conformance. So essentially, this ordinance follows very closely the model guidelines that the department has put out there. We're going to have to learn how to, as well, the other municipalities in town, but they apply primarily to major developments in town. So just to give you that background. Wanted to mention one thing, Matt, that you didn't remember, I get to say. Very exciting, we finally are moving forward on our Safe Streets to School projects, which are, and you'll have to think back, they date back to 2016 and 2018, when we first conceptualized those projects and got awarding grants from the NGDOT. Well, what I'm really pleased to say is, we're now getting into, getting through the final engineering phase of those projects, which are primarily intersection enhancements to make it safer to walk and more accessible for everybody. Fairly straightforward. What's really exciting to me is not only are we moving forward, but we're, we're moving the two projects forward together. So we're going to have what's called a public information session on Monday, June 17th, between 6:00 and 8:00 PM, to review various intersections, which are all listed on our website, that are part of this program, where, especially if it's near your home, and they want to come and, and learn more about what's being proposed. But it's very exciting because I'm getting the sense, although I'm not holding my breath, that the department really wants to get to implementation in this calendar year or early next year, which wasn't the message I was getting previously. So I just wanted to get, because we don't have another council meeting until the 18th, I wanted to make sure to announce that meeting, and more details will come shortly. Councilman George asked me to highlight the resolution regarding the library. He was, he's detained by the work this evening. You'll see an award to another company, Matt Group. This is, we had an issue with the bid that we awarded at the last meeting, but we were able to go ahead to the next responsible bidder in that group. So we're excited to work with them to get that roof project done. They don't have information on it. They don't have information on timelines yet. I hope to be able to point out that really soon. And the other thing he wanted me to mention was, he was very happy to get a quick ride in the new fire vehicle a little weekend. It appears to be a great fit for our community and has already been deployed a couple of times. So that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Our attorney's report?
I'll have it, Mayor.
Oh, I just want to highlight again that on Monday, Memorial Day, we start our activities here in Highland Park at 8:00 in the morning. And it starts across the street at the Police Department and the Fire Department. And we do so by laying wreaths at spots, various areas here in town. I think there are six locations where we lay wreaths. So please do come out and do support because we have families that come out every year who have lost family members in the line of service here in town. So it's very important that you come out and show your support for people who have given so much. And last but not least, East Brunswick has the opportunity of having a moving Vietnam Memorial display. And it's on display this entire month. And anyone who's interested to see the moving Vietnam Memorial display can go to East Brunswick Community Center to see that in memories of those who have given so much. For all of us, for the privilege that we all share of living in this country. And now it's time for public participation. It's time for public participation. 21 minutes allotted, three minutes per speaker to any item on the agenda. For people attending in person will be heard first, followed by those attended on Zoom. Yes, please come up and announce your name. And address.
There's no microphone, is it?
See it?
Oh, sideways, okay. I was looking at North Second Avenue. Okay, on the agenda, I heard mentioned how Denison will be paved. I hope it is sooner than later, summer poll. Well, Somerset County towns have many lawsuits when the potholes get very deep, not just patches. And then you have a smoker, like an MG or something, that breaks the front end of the axle. And for average neighbors, they're hitting all them on the front end. It's not a good thing for a washboard block for how many years? So that would be helpful, I think, to the borough and to residents. Sooner the better. When you go forward to the Fulton Avenue top lot, 5-24-154, what is a rail panel? And in Stormwater Management, they talk about NJDOT wanting bike proof rates, the storm rates being no more than half an inch. I think the ADA is less than that because wheelchairs often have to go at the intersection too often where the grade is or nearby. So that might be looked into. If I had more time today, I would have grabbed the book and double-checked it. But at the maximum, half inch in between. Let's talk about... Oh, also, the Stormwater Management talks about dry well use. Are those still permitted in the, in the country? Remember Jessica something killed there in Holland, Texas, 25 or so years ago, a toddler, 18 months old? They got her out after a week, I think, alive. But how is it capped? So that's coming up. I know that's for next meeting. Will the Stormwater Management go into the land use ordinance? Just a duplicate. And... Oh, Main Street? Is it normal?
Thirty seconds.
That the salaries, general expenses are almost, not quite, almost twice as much as the promotions? $121,000 for promotion, which is, I thought, what Main Street is about, plus a financial aspect that I'm sure was thrown away. And 233, give or take for admission administration in general? I find it odd.
Fine.
But okay, I'm too far, and I'll see you later. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Please come up to the microphone, announce your name and address.
Hi, my name is Trishie Walsh. I'm not a resident of Highland Park. I think I have met one of your councilmen at the Highland Park Street Fair. I work with Community Housing Resource Center in the lead abatement and remediation program. You brought your bicycle. I wanted to introduce our program. We have a program for ones of four family homes that are built before 1978 for the free lead remediation and abatement if they follow the income guidelines. I brought materials that I can distribute to council and the mayor as well. I wanted to get to the library to distribute there as well, but it was closed before I got here.
I can help you with that. My father's just here.
You kept it on here.
Yes, please, you can distribute your material.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishes to speak? Terry, anyone on Zoom?
I don't see hands raised at home. And we're looking at five members of the public on one.
It's about the library, I was saying.
No?
Sorry.
All right. Seeing there's no further comment, may I move to close the public participation session?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kintola?
Yes.
And Councilman Piston?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Ordinance requiring a first reading. Can you please report an ordinance number 24-2085?
In order to amend Article 20 of the Code of the Borough of Highland Park 2010 concerning Stormwater Management has been duly introduced by Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of past exams versus reading by title.
May I have a motion to approve or reject?
Motion to approve.
Set a public hearing for June 18th.
A public hearing June 18th. And set your public hearing for June 18th. Roque.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kintola?
Yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
Resolution requiring a separate reading. May I have a motion, motion to adopt or reject Resolution 5-24-149, Resolution to authorize self-examination of municipal budget in accordance with the NJSA 408.4-7B and NJAC 5-307.
So move.
Second.
Roque.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kintola?
Yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject the following resolution, 5-24-150, Resolution authorizing reading of budget by title. Only by title.
So...
Second. Roque.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kintola?
Yes.
Councilman, Councilman Piston?
Yes.
May I have a motion to open the public hearing on the 2024 municipal budget?
So move.
Second.
Public hearing on municipal budget.
If anybody at home would like to speak on the municipal budget, please raise your hand. I can see no hands, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, see that there's none. May I have a motion to close public hearing on the 2024 municipal budget?
Motion approved.
Second. Roque.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kintola?
Yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject Resolution 5-24-151, Resolution to adopt 2024 municipal budget?
So move.
Second. Roque.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kintola?
Yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject Resolution 5-24-152, authorizing the reading of Main Street Highland Park budget by title only.
So move. Second.
Roque.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kintola?
Yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
May I have a motion to open a public hearing on the 2024 Main Street Highland Park budget?
So move.
Second.
Public hearing on Main Street budget, Main Street Highland Park budget. Anyone wishes to speak in this studio?
No hands.
Okay. May I have a motion to close the 2024 Main Street Highland Park budget?
So move.
Second.
Roque.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kintola?
Yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject Resolution 5-24-153, Resolution to adopt 2024 Main Street Highland Park budget?
Motion to adopt. Second. Roque.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kintola? Yes, and thank you to the finance committee and all the professionals on your work on the 2024 budget. Councilman Piston?
Yes.
Now we move to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the following consent agenda items, 13A through 13F?
So move.
Second.
Roque.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kintola?
Yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
Now we move on to appointments to the Arts Commission, Ariana Astini, and Community Emergency Response Team Suzanne Arney. May I have a motion to confirm both of these members?
So move. Second. Roque.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes, thank you to all our volunteers.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes, and thank you as well.
Councilwoman Kintola?
Yes.
Councilman Piston?
I'd just like to congratulate Ariana. I've had the pleasure of working with her on the Arts Commission. She's been sort of an unofficial member for the past few months and has been attending meetings and helping plan various projects. I thought, yes.
Very well, very well said. And now it's time for the second public participation. Three minutes per speaker on any topic, subject to close at 9:00 p.m. Right to work session? Right to work session?
No.
Oh, okay. So it's a work session, okay?
It's a school.
All right. Subject to conclude at 9:00 p.m. Comments from members in person will be heard first, followed by those attended on Zoom.
North Second Avenue, again. Okay, I asked, I guess it will be found out. My question about the library was going to be, how long is the warranty for this roof? So I think that we looked into. An executive session, you can't go into, I know, the county joint insurance. What does that have to do with us? I thought we were guarding state of municipal insurance, guarding the state.
Um, Mayor, would you like me to address?
Yes, attorney?
Um, at construction, we can't go into details. It's attorney-client privilege. But once the opportunity arises where we can make it public, we will let everybody know.
Okay, so then let's go back a year or not quite. It was litigation on the...
Ma'am, ma'am, we're not talking anymore about NCMS, executive session. But if you have any other questions that you would like to state, then we can try to see if we can answer them. But anything to do with executive sessions, not going to be open discussion.
Six or eight months old, so we'll never find out.
Ma'am, like I said, and I'm going to keep saying the same thing.
My name is Lois.
Okay, I'm going to keep saying the same thing. We're not here discussing anything happening to executive sessions, attorney-client privilege.
So what is the time limit? Two years?
Exactly. Attorney-client privilege can go on forever.
Forever.
Okay, but I just told you right now, right before, that if there comes an opportunity where I can make it public, it will become public. That's it.
It's an insurance deal.
Ma'am?
Thank you, ma'am.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good for you. Okay. Months ago, I asked, or weeks ago, about lithium batteries. Does anybody know? Did anybody walk across the street? Did anybody research? Are the lithium batteries in our bathroom scale in other places in the house subject to these sudden fire falls? Or is it only the rechargeable stuff in modern? You were going to get back to me?
No, no, no. We're going to...
No, we were going to get back to you.
Oh, right. Okay, this isn't Robert's rules, so we have to wait for some sort of comment from the... I don't remember seeing that in Robert's rules.
Um, ma'am, would you like me to address this again?
Yes, attorney, sir.
Could you speak louder?
Okay, so during our petitions, you are, and as we've said in the protocol before, all the questions will be asked, and then we're going to close the public portion, and then we're going to respond to your questions. Everything we do is legal, okay?
Oh, I've heard that before. That's baloney.
Okay, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I'm just responding to your questions. You have a legal question.
Okay.
Not a sir, but a ma'am, but thank you.
Okay. Under ordinance 24-203, about stop and shop a month or so ago, page three, somebody said they didn't hear that the ordinance talked about 35 full-time employees, 15 part-time. Page three of that were in your ordinance. 20 people for the construction job, sales tax revenue. It didn't say how long on page four, approximately $680,000[1620.88] It didn't say how long on page four, approximately six hundred and eighty thousand dollars from that grocery store. Okay. I guess there's no comment there, but it's page three and four that somebody didn't hear. I talked to the mayor about faxes. I don't know if it's last July or the previous. I sent to the clerk's office, as I often do, two pages, two requests for information. One went through, they both went through. My verification said two pages went through.
Thirty seconds.
One was arrived and said that it was, okay, anyhow, I came in and got my pieces. Only one was known by the deputy clerk. She had no idea about the missing request that I had about the South Third Avenue closure, the safety aspect. So I made a third request. It came through. There is no report on what's happening on the north side when South Third is closed and we have a fire or whatever. And also, I sent the tax, I never get to the tax assessor. I said the thank you. And I called him, and I thought, huh, I haven't.
Point of order, your time is up.
Okay, it's
Thank you.
It's very mysterious, that suddenly.
Ma'am, your point, ma'am, ma'am, thank you so much. Your time is up. And we let you go over a couple of seconds. Thank you.
Do you have a hands up from someone at home? Abby Stern Cardenow, you're next. Please state your name and confirm it's you.
Hi, sorry. Yes, it is Abby Stern Cardenow. I live on Harper Street. I have a couple of comments. One is just, I'm really happy to see, you know, some of these resolutions and things moving forward. Obviously, I am excited about the tot lot, those street repairs. You know, I want these all to move forward as quickly as possible, the library, all of this is really exciting. I do want to make a comment about just the general meeting format and public comment. I think it's really important. I know there's been a shift, but I think that we're setting, you know, an important precedent here in terms of how, how the public is being allowed to speak. And I just wanted to make a request that, especially during the first public comment, that we allow, or that you allow, I should say, but, you know, the community has the ability to speak a second time if there's no one else speaking within that twenty minutes. I, you know, whether, whether it's necessary in that first public comment today or not, I, you know, I'm not even talking about that, but in general, you know, that's before the vote occurs, and that twenty minutes is time for the public. So I completely understand the need to keep, you know, efficiency. These meetings have been very well organized lately and respectful interactions. I understand the point of all of that, but if there's time left in that twenty-one minutes, I would respectfully request that the public be allowed to speak a second time. Again, I'm concerned about setting the precedent when we have really, not that it's not important, you know, every issue, but we have some big issues that come up in town, and we have in the past. And I know that doesn't mean we'd have to continue, but we have allowed people to clarify their points, make a second comment. We've had some really big things that are incredibly important in this town. We've gone through so much, you know, kind of together as a town. And I think it's really important that we continue to allow dialogue from the public. And again, in the second portion, you know, it's totally reasonable to keep it to a time limit, but if there's additional time within the allotted time, I would ask that you would, again, respectfully allow for a second comment within that period, not a third and fourth. I'm not saying to let it go on and on. But I really think that that's important to have that interaction from the public, especially prior to voting. But again, I'm very happy for everything that you voted on tonight and all the work that you're doing and moving forward with these. A lot of really great improvements.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you so much.
I do see another hand, mayor, just a second. Sorry, ma'am. Marion Blocker Reich, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Three two four Lincoln Avenue.
And your name?
Marilyn Blatcher Reich.
Thanks.
My Okay, my concern is kind of a simple one. At the triangle of Madison Avenue and Fourth on the north side, there's a little park there, and my understanding is that that is maintained by Public Works. My question is, I just don't have the history behind that park, but I've been walking my dog there for years. There is some weird stuff there. There's some like beads, Halloween-looking things, some sticks that were sticking up, pots. I know someone's planting flowers. I don't know if that's the town or someone else, but could some, someone explain to me what those things are and why they're there? I think it really does need to be cleaned up. The bushes need to be trimmed. There are very dangerous trees there that could fall. They're very unhealthy. So I don't know, I know, I guess you can't respond, but I'm very concerned about that park, and I think it needs to be cleaned up. Unless there's a reason, a memorial or something, that these beads and odd items are there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't see any other hands on here.
Seeing there's no further comment, may I move to close the public participation?
So moved. Second.
Rocco?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kintchon?
Yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
And I want to start by apologizing. In the first public session, Lois said, did ask some questions about paving and the Felton tot lot. And I just want to address the, the reason why there's going to be Braille on the Felton tot lot. We want to make it accessible for all. So the Braille writing will be on the playground equipment. So someone with a disability will have an opportunity to participate as well. We want to make it for all abilities. The other one was, she talked about stormwater management. This is something that we'll have to get back to you on. So Terry, can we work on another stormwater management, the D O T, the grade, the dry use and the land use? And for
Certainly look into that, I think. But I just want to keep in mind, this was a name dictated to us by the state of the region, but we should understand.
Can you repeat that? Because you mentioned that earlier in the open of the meeting. Can you just go over that?
The ordinance mirrors the guidance ordinance that the Department of Environmental Protection promulgated to the municipality. So we have no prior to authorship, but we can certainly investigate some of the provisions for
And another question was asked also about the warranty at the library, the roof. I don't know that answer, but we can get back to you. I'll check with Mr. Bobbich and get back to you at some other time, when he has all this documentation. Lithium batteries, I don't know any, I just, the only thing I know about lithium batteries, when you're on a plane, they say, don't take them with you, put them in someplace else. But I think there, there's no other warning that I'm aware of, but we can also check into that. I'm not sure about the, Stop and Shop has been closed for over a year, so I don't know anything about that. And any faxes that may have been sent in. I do, there is one here that I lithium batteries, she, she asked about lithium batteries for the fire department. And I think we can bring that to our public safety chair for him to address any kind of lithium battery that over at, over in public safety. And I don't think DPW does anything with that, no?
No, I mean, generally electronics, so you can take your electronics to drop off at DPW on Valentine. And I'm just looking, so you know, things like computer monitors, desktop, personal computers and laptops, things with lithium batteries, printers, fax machines. You know, it's not recommended to put those in the garbage because, because we can, we can see how there are hazards related. But Lois, thank you for raising the issue, and we'll, we'll make sure that we put something together that's a little more explicit on the website related to lithium batteries, because we have had incidents, we have had incidents in the past, particularly with electric powered objects that have ended up in our, in our garbage. Thank you.
And then Marilyn asked about the pocket park over on North Fourth by Falling Heroes Way. Just a little bit of history, that street, that area was named Falling Heroes Way. We had a number of residents that had put memorial mementos in that area, but maybe it's time for us to go take a look, a look at that, take a look at that area with DPW and see if it needs a little bit of sprucing up.
Absolutely. Thank you to the residents.
Yes. Councilmember Hill?
I just wanted to add that I live, my dog goes to the same park. So that, you know, there are a number of different monuments there. There's Fallen Hillary's Way, a monument to a Vietnam veteran from town who passed away. There's a bench for, that was built by one of the residents on Fourth in honor of his wife who passed away. And then there's a number of people in the residence, in the area, who've sort of taken it upon themselves to spruce it up on a regular basis. So they plant flowers, they plant a variety of things. So it really is sort of a small community pocket park that has, you know, that people have sort of taken some ownership with them. So I, I think that we can certainly have DPW take another, you know, run over and take a, take a look at it. But there are a number of folks who care about the park and have put up their own stamp on it. So I think that's a good thing, so.
No, I told you, Adri, because through the years, before we even named it Falling Heroes Way, did a full dedication. People were lovingly taking care of it, so I hope that continues. Randy? Councilmember Canavera?
I just wanted to point out that the Braille panel is something that the Commission for Universal Access had recommended many years ago when they did a presentation for the council and mayor on accessible playgrounds. And that was one of the things that was included, and we're very happy that it's going to be in now.
So, okay, executive session, we're going to go into executive session. And it's potential litig, may I have a motion to we're going to move into executive session. May I have a motion to adopt or reject five dash twenty-four one sixty, executive session, potential litigation, Middlesex County Joint Insurance Fund?
Second.
Rocco?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes, thank you.
Councilwoman Kintchon?
Yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adjourn this session and go into executive session? We will not be returning to open the public session tonight after executive.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next meeting is scheduled for June eighteenth at seven P M. But please do not forget about the June fifth at the high school, our presentation, our charrette presentation. Thank you. Have a wonderful and safe Memorial Day weekend. Good night.